All right, stand for the flag. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with every day just for all.
You remain standing for the invocation. We have Pastor Joe Stafford here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lord, we are grateful to assemble here tonight. Thank you for these men and women who serve you so faithfully in our city's business, and we are grateful, Lord, for our town. We ask that you would bless them, give them wisdom as they work, and know that during this holy week, that we are reminded of the goodness that you have given in servant-hood that way. And, Lord, we pray for these servants now and ask that you would bless them. Thank you again for a community like ours. We are grateful for it, grateful for people that love it and want to see it flourish. We pray your blessings upon them and all the proceedings. We ask in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a couple folks that are going to be, were unable to attend this evening. We're going to go through the roll call, get a motion. We had some emails today that asked these.
Can we do them now before roll call?
No, let me do roll call.
Roll call first. Okay, let's ask for roll call.
All right, Ms. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Watkins.
Here.
Ms. Durbin.
Dr. Fowler.
Here.
Mr. Ivey.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Ms. Ziegler.
Here.
All right, can I get a motion to excuse us? I'd like to make a motion to make a motion to call Ms. Durbin and Mr. Ivey to a midnight session. Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
I'll second that motion.
Second, please. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, roll call for the elected official.
Mayor Leary.
Here.
Audrey Satterfield.
Here.
Director Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks.
Here.
Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the minutes. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the large time second, out of meeting.
Right, motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Alt, second by Ms. Ziegler. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, we have one item to add.
That's right. All right, could I get a motion to amend the agenda?
Twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to add ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one to the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Richard, thank you.
I'll second that.
Second, please. Ms. Alt. Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Watkins.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second, thank you. Dr. Fowler, seconded by Mr. Watkins. Roll call for you.
Yeah, it's a motion. It's a voice vote.
It's a voice vote. No, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I didn't see anything from the citizens, the city council. So we'll move on to the legislation. Start with ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eighteen.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eighteen entitled ordinance setting the power cost adjustment as required per ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash thirty-nine and declaring an emergency.
This is a third reading, together in discussion.
Mr. President, if there's not any preliminary discussion, I would like to make a motion to amend this ordinance, referring to section four, everything after the one to third line, which would be, and be enforced immediately upon the earliest time allowed by law after its passage. I would like to remove that and add to that instead, immediately upon its passage and approval by at least five members of city council, otherwise from and after the earliest time allowed by law after its passage.
Right. Five would still, five is what's required. I'm out of leg step here. You probably need a second before we talk about that. I think he wants to take up the emergency clause.
Yeah, well, he wants to, he wants to amend the verdict. If he does, if he gets five, the emergency there, not that it goes into effect early as possible, provided that he gets five votes. That's what he's adding there.
Okay, I didn't catch the fact that you would ask to have the emergency ordinance removed.
No, he's not removing it. He's amending it.
He's amending. Can you read it again, please?
What I am asking to do is essentially removing the part of section four, which says that, and be enforced immediately upon the earliest time allowed by law after its passage. This comes after the verbiage that says essentially measures, measure is determined to be an emergency ordinance and shall take effect. The section I'm asking to remove is and, and the rest of that, and to add to that.
Yeah, I'm with you so far.
Okay.
Could you tell me what you're adding?
What I'm adding is adding immediately upon its passage and approval by at least five members of city council, otherwise from and after the earliest time allowed by law upon its.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, I'm cool.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Thank you, Mr. Richard.
Sorry, Mike, I misunderstood it at first, what you were doing. I didn't listen to it.
I'll second that motion. Seconded by Dr. Fowler. Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Watkins.
Yeah.
All right, motion carried with a five oh vote. All right, moving back to the ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash.
As amended.
As amended. Discussion.
Mr. President, might be helpful for to, this is the third reading on this ordinance. It came through law, or through, excuse me, the utility committee. This is the increase in the PCA on a point zero zero three four four. And I hope I'm not overstepping my colleagues, since she's the committee chair, but wanted to make sure that everybody understood that while the original recommendation made by Sawville was actually a point zero zero six nine, I think it was nine nine three, if I remember correctly, the committee felt that this amount, which was a percentage, that they felt that would be encompassing any forthcoming increases that we may see. Sadly, this might not be enough. We all know, we're all sitting at the same table, we're all sitting, watching things go on. I think that there's nobody around this table or in this room that wants to increase any type of rate here in the community. At least of all, anything that is going to have an effect on anything. Now, I should say that this is also a point zero zero three four four.
No, only one four.
Three, four?
Oh, okay, okay.
This would essentially be on a thousand kilowatt bill, essentially three dollars and four forty cents to that bill. And while I know every dime and penny now, right now, is a, something that we cherish, we also, also need to make sure that we are able to cover the cost of the utility, of the power that we're going to be getting here in the near future. I just want to make that everybody aware.
Mr. Richard.
Dr. Fowler. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass amended ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eighteen.
Motion to pass the ordinance by Dr. Fowler, seconded by Mr. Watkins. Thank you, roll call. Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Watkins.
Yep.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
No.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
All right, motion passed, four one. All right, moving on to ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash seventeen entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to execute any and all documents to transfer property to the Gowning Port Authority and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. We have a discussion.
This came through law ordinance, and essentially what this is, is a transfer of property that the city currently has, that was given to us by, I believe it was Eagle Crusher.
We took it.
Oh, okay, we took it. My apologies. And we have a party that's interested in utilizing it, and this essentially transfers the property to the port authority, who has a better ability to make those type of arrangements. And I will defer to, let's say, the service director on there, but they would probably know it with more than that now of this.
Trying to look for the section here. Was this a straight transfer? There's no, there's no fees involved. Since we're only going to be able to hold it to a first reading tonight, you may think about that, look at that. We had about seventeen thousand, if memory serves me, in phase one and phase two expenditure. You know, if we were driving a harder bargain, we could say to the port, we want to get that money that we have invested in the, and we got it by tax foreclosure. We didn't pay them, but tax foreclosure. But that'd be the only comment that I have, is just to be sure everybody realizes there's no, there's nothing coming back to the city. I think it probably allows it to revert back to us if things don't, aren't executed in a certain amount of time. That's about all I have.
Are you ready to divulge the intent?
Yeah, they want to, there's a project, existing business in town wants to construct the small, I would understand as a machine shop, kind of a condoized machine shop. It would be on Market Street, and any storage would be behind the building itself. So it will have, would have, under their proposal, parking on the front, building sit back a little bit, and then access off of Pershing would be, I think, where that you would see any kind of business-related traffic.
Would they just interest in whole property, Tom, or just they look for?
I think, I think the intent can is to split it into two parcels. And I think some, I think the key issue is going to be a clear understanding on land use and storage, to try to make sure that that is, is understood going into it, doesn't become a problem two, three years into their occupancy.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of council, there's going to be a need to amend this. Julie, did you have that language here, or?
No, I asked, this way, I asked upstairs.
I mean, it can also, we can amend it next time. Just to let you know, there's a couple of very minor changes that need to be made in the legal description that you have in front of you. So we can absolutely do it next time. Okay, thank you, Paula.
Yeah, I was looking for this, y'all, and I, it's in the agreement, under the number two, at the bottom of the page. It's like an amendment to the ordinance itself, where it speaks to the purchase price of the parcels will, shall be at zero dollars. So if you hate that idea, I'll take the blame for it, and you could probably insert some amount if you feel like we should recover those costs.
For the discussion?
And not, or sell it to the owner? I mean, that's how it's better.
Yeah.
All right, and they will keep the profits, you know, and then, of course, utilize them for other, you know.
Yep, that's why it's, you know, they're, they're still far from self-sufficient. So the, helping them get to that point. So that's really all, all there is, just for first reading, and like Thomas said, you can change that tonight or change it to.
Mr. Richard. I'd just like to add too, that the benefit this would give, the opportunity to finally use, utilize a portion of this property that's over on market, that currently is essentially a vacant lot. So I think that's an A plus.
Yeah, there was a little bit of arsenic on the site, which would require further, you have to take the soil out, we get below the allowable level, and then rebuild the site. If it's used for a commercial purpose, it's satisfactory to that. So our original hope in acquiring it was to have some either single-family or, you know, perhaps a multi-family housing on that lot, but it just isn't, I don't think it's, it makes good sense to clean the site to a residential standard and then try to go out and sell it, especially when this opportunity or this inquiry from a local business, you know.
It's consistent with the neighbor, but it's not, you know, there are businesses in that.
Yeah, I mean, yes, yeah, I expect, given the alternative to what it was like, this will be an improvement, but that has to do with the energy controls that the port exercises when they convey the property.
On this property, will this be a, they'll pay for it, or are we taking payment plan or yearly?
I don't know, that, the.
Have to come with that.
It won't be our, when we convey it, it'll be up to the port to.
Oh, okay.
I think what our, our oversight, if you will, is to make sure that that's an arrangement everybody's comfortable with.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, we'll move on to ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to contract for airnet auction services to dispose of unneeded personal, personal property owned by the city of Gowning and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Discussion.
Mr. President, this too came through law and ordinance, and I'm going to defer, but seeing the chief isn't here tonight, to Ms. Ward, if she would be so kind, to kind of fill us in a little bit.
Thanks. We thought to have an internet auction in two thousand seventeen, so we're just going to be doing the same to get rid of some unused property, old cars, transporters that we don't use anymore since the lineup grade, a couple generators, so odds and ends and different permits. We just, we have been used fully in the city, so we'll be auctioning on airnet auctions and go deals. We list them, go deals takes a twelve and a half percent. Buyer's premium that the buyer pays, and then we get full auction price. So avoiding some stuff we don't use and bringing some of that in offers.
This site offers a platform that cascades larger than what we could locally here, I think is the objective with it.
I think last time, yeah, it was pretty successful. We ended up having, I think, two real plumbers that people didn't come pick up in April, but they never picked up. So it's a go back in the pool again this year.
If not, we'll move on to ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to enter into an agreement with GPD group for professional engineering services related to water treatment plant improvements and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion?
This came through the utilities committee. This is an ordinance that would allow the safety service director to contract with a consulting agency, like an engineering agency, to make a plan to do the repairs, some of the, I think, a good chunk of repairs that are needed at the water treatment plant. So going in and making recommendations and doing that whole process of the drawing and design, and kind of have a plan to bid it out. I think that's a good step in the direction of making those much needed repairs up there, and that's a way to kind of get in with that.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Leary?
I'm just going to say that the proposal is real straightforward. It outlines the elements of work, three payment points on when they're going to get paid. It's one of the things that, that I think we liked about the proposal, is it's straightforward, and I think gives, will give clear direction to the, to the, ultimately to the bidders once these plans get done. So the need to get this moving, I think, is directly related to being able to address some of the things that have been pointed out by EPA and by our staff that need to be maintenance or major repairs, replacements to some of the key parts of the filtration process. It's really, again, I think it's, like, we have two weeks inside the proposal and come back with some questions. It just, the sooner we can get this passed, the better. So I'm anxious for a rapid recovery on both our absence of people, for their own good, but also for the ability to get this thing moved through.
Mr. Richard.
Yeah, mayor, once this will get passed, have they given some type of timetable on when this information would be completed or done, or?
Nick, do you have that roughly?
I think the timeframe was with construction by the end of twenty-three. So the engineers starting as soon as possible after the side, that's what I think the plans have been completed by the end of next year.
Yeah, so we hope to, I mean, the goal is to get these plans bidable this fall, bid it over the winter if possible, that would be the optimum. It may lag into the summer. The winter's ideal, I don't want to wait another year, but we, we may be advised to, the winter is our lowest usage, so it would be a good time to shut down one of the clarifiers. And we have less of a buildup of TTHM during those months, so that would lead us to a construction timeframe that they get into the, in, by the winter. I'm not sure, even if this passed tonight, if that isn't an aggressive, ambitious schedule. That's what we're shooting for.
That's, that was going to be my next question, because for the folks that are watching this stuff, they're probably thinking, wow, that long? But it's, it's, it's part of the whole process. And there's other issues, I'm sure, with construction materials and a variety of things that may be coming up with it, so.
Lead time, the, the number of contractors that would bid on this, they may have a, they may have a backlog at work too, so I imagine that that'll factor in between now and the time we have a contract with the, with a construction firm. There's, there's a handful, not a lot, but a handful of variables that are, that are going to make this a challenge.
Mr. Richard.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree with Mike, but this has been such a hot topic in town. I'm kind of getting a little nasty at times with the children, people, but we're not doing that. But I think we shouldn't drag our feet on this and try to get this group started so we can head in the right direction, make people happy.
And I think just one other thing to note is that this is coming from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, so it's not coming directly out of any of the sewer or the water funds to do this. So that's also the plan with funding the project. So it's money used from the American Rescue Plan to make these upgrades and repairs, as well as the engineering work.
But I, I think there are a few tens of thousands that will be left in our first round of money, the first five hundred and fifty thousand that we got. So we spent, if you recall, the two forty-five upon utility rebates for customers, and we're using the balance of that. I think it's one seventy-six or something like this. This uses one eighteen of that. So there's a little bit left to go to projects, but it does speak, it does gobble up or use most of that first round, and I think we're waiting to see the next round deposit. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's been booked. I haven't talked to Audrey about it. It hasn't arrived yet. Yep, so we'll use county ARPA dollars to fund the actual construction, and we're using our money to do the design.
All right, done. Further discussion? If no further discussion, then we'll move on to ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one. If no further discussion, then we'll move on to ordinance number 2022-31.
Ordinance number 2022-31, entitled Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2021-116, approved on December twenty-eighth, 2021, which amended ordinance number 2020-92, the permanent 2021 appropriations, by appropriating and transferring funds in various funds and declaring an emergency.
Do we have any discussion?
Uh, I'm going to ask, uh...
I've not seen it.
Oh.
So you, I can't answer any questions, so.
Oh, you hadn't seen it?
No.
I hadn't seen it either, that's why I was asking this before you.
So, where it came out of your office then?
Yes.
Or?
I, you were on the email chain, and it went back to you, for checking.
I, honestly, I just...
Okay.
I'm not trying to be snarky or anything, I, I have not...
No, 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 I, I, I try to be, uh, combative or anything, I just was curious.
I can only say briefly, right, when the mayor asked me what, what it's about.
Okay, well, thank you.
The outlier for me, the health department, I don't, uh, I, I'll acknowledge, I didn't attend their meeting at five, so I just wanna be clear about that, but the, they, I really feel that they need to come, the health commissioner or staff, he staff needs to come when there's an ordinance like this, just to drop it off, and we're gonna pay it like, you know...
This is correcting errors in the ordinance of, the ordinance 2021-116.
Okay, that makes more sense. Okay, so, this, this is the ordinance that Nikki, or that Eunice sent you on the correction?
Yeah.
So the, there's an ordinance that was, that was passed, I do know this, I know this. But I, I hadn't, I hadn't seen the language here, I didn't know.
Okay.
So there was a, there was an ordinance that was passed back la, last year, that had funds being transferred from certain lines, and the, and the fund accounts were wrong, so we have to, to change those so that they reflect correctly, the changes have been made, put in the right, the ready to be pushed button, but it's, it's just changing that ordinance to the funding account, where the money's going back and forth with is correct. Sorry, Julie, with that, when you said that, 'cause I do remember that email back and forth with Eunice, who knew about what those lines, so, yeah, it's not actually, we're not physically moving money, but that ordinance has already been passed, correcting the systems, correcting the files.
The numbers were wrong, they were in it, yeah, not so dollar rounds, but just so correct.
I thought that's what it was, but...
Yeah.
Thank you. Can you help me about, with four, then? For the re, all of this, section four, I'm trying to see what is the change.
It's a typo, so in the five, two, two, zero, four, in the corrected section, incorrect is five, two, three, zero, four.
I see.
One, two, zero, four.
So then, two, two, oh, four, that was mine, that was mine.
When Eunice was trying to enter the data, she realized that there wasn't an account under that line, that that number didn't exist, for today, basically.
Thank you.
So do any corrections need to be made?
Yeah.
So they have to...
It wanted to pass in two weeks, this ordinance.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, I, I believe that this, the ordinance now is corrects the errors that were made with the original ordinance. So we can stick it in the file with the transfers.
Okay.
That's, that's basically what you're doing, I mean, the ordinance gives that authority, and we just put it with the transfer data.
Yeah, it's a typographical error.
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Satterfield. Any further discussion? If not, um, we can move on to other business. We have, uh, uh, Council, from the Council, Dr. Fellman?
Um, I'll speak for, um, I'm sorry, we have economic development at Airport on, um, April nineteenth, seven P M, and, uh, I'll speak for Mr. Ivey, we've got finance on the twentieth, at seven P M.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I have the, uh, based by our Health Committee meeting on the twenty-first at seven.
Street, uh, streets and bridges, it would be the fourteenth, Thursday.
That's what it is. I'm sorry.
That's all right, I was just trying to help you there, so yeah.
He's got a calendar, huh?
Yeah.
He's got that.
I saw him struggling there.
Fourteen at seven P M, what kind of...
Um, the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, I send an hour away, but that's been, that was when he helped, he's parked, that's been canceled.
All right, thank you, and we don't have a rescheduled date for that at this time. All right, that's everyone, um, collective officials. Mr. Satterfield, again?
My, uh, bi-monthly report, there, we have some of the revenue reports on the front, and Eunice came out today, um, related to month-to-date, seven hundred and two thousand two eighty-seven eight. We're just now getting into the, the teeth of the revenue mon, part of month of utilities, so, you see, we're at twenty-two percent of that, that overall, you're pretty quick. Page two is the expense report, month-to-date, expenses are six hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three hundred and ninety, been prepared, uh, for twenty-two percent basically of our expenses year-to-date so far, and our target at the end of month is thirty-three percent. I'm gonna preface the, the next two, again, that we already do, I give you the, the first page is the state of the cash on twelve thirty-one twenty-one, I can tell you that that report, this final, November, December have been reconciled, you don't have a paperwork yet, we haven't been able to get everything taken care of, uh, there's a couple of small issues in twenty-one, but thanks to the assistance of our office and everybody down there in the other office, with some guidance, we were able to reconcile November and December. So you will see that, uh, there are, would be, on that front page, a couple funds that show negative on the year-end balance, and quite frankly, that's gonna be because we didn't get this done in time for any ordinances to rectify that situation by the end of the year, we can't go back and make an ordinance and pass and move money. So the two oh one fund shows almost twenty thousand negative, and Cheshire is forty-three five, normally there's an ordinance for Cheshire to advance money, to zero that out, and then advance it back out, um, and the mayor and I have talked briefly a bit about the two oh one fund, but, uh, yeah, we just can't fix those. That being said, the, the last two pages are month-to-year-to-date cash, state of cash balances, um, if you look at the net effective balances, it's three point nine, you take that with the first page, twenty point six, sitting roughly, twenty-three million dollars combined outside of the consequences. Questions, thoughts, concerns? We're still trading water, um, that's the simplest way to say, we've had a couple hiccups, um, a couple missteps, Julie, I'm sorry, um, things happen sometimes, it was, we're doing our best, and, uh, there's still some bills that need to be paid, we have a bunch of bills paid out earlier this week, yesterday, and today, but we're out in the woods and still trying to, to clean up to twenty-one, and then I gotta get started on reconciling, there's a lot of payments that are in March, we need to focus. The state authorities assure me that once we get it caught up, doing it month-to-month will be easy, I'm not so sure.
Thank you, Mr. Satterfield.
Thank you.
Mr. Sparks?
First time I, I really looked it over, uh, I signed off on the, uh, final figures for November and December this morning, um, and, uh, you know, this is, uh, you know, seeing the ending balances for the end of the year is, is definitely awesome, uh, his department's done a great job, um, you can see in the one, if I look on the, the first or the second page for the end of the year, um, you have seven point four million dollars in the general fund, and if you look in the, uh, so what, so now that he's completed the, uh, end of the year, um, you look at the unexpended, unexpended balances, so that's the number that was in the bank at the end of the year, so, so where do you have the nineteen thousand negative in the street fund, um, and that's what went with the end of the year, so, um, so you got, did pretty good there, and then, uh, you know, electric funds, you know, it's been worse before, and, um, it's not doing too bad, I got the wrong page here, um, there with me, so, um, you know, it's almost five hundred dollars, and then the water fund, um, you know, we lost about a little over three, three hundred thousand, and we got six hundred and ninety-six dollars in there, so, that's why I had to watch out in the sewer fund, so, but at least there, you know, we got the figures, um, and then, uh, um, and that's where we can move forward, so that's, I think, it's here, we have these numbers. One thing, um, looking forward is, um, for the first time in the last couple weeks, the yield, I don't know if you ever look at treachery yield curves, you probably don't, but, um, I don't look at them too often, but they came, the ten-year became negative to the, uh, two-year, and that's a sign of, of a recession, so it was at one point five six at this time last year, so, and it's, it fell to the negative, and it's back into positive, but not very much, so that's a sign of a, of a recession's coming, um, and inflation's one thing that we have to watch, um, gas prices are gonna go up, and the cost of food is really gonna go up too, so, um, you know, not that we have that with the city that much, but, um, um, but those are some, some costs that are really gonna go up for, for people, citizens at least, so, um, and, uh, that's just something we need to look out for, so that's about it.
Mr. Sparks? Just follow me.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Eric, I don't really have anything tonight, the, you know, I'm trying to get, uh, everybody back healthy, so we can move some legislation, uh, the one thing I would add is that on the eighteenth, uh, nineteenth, is economic development, I, uh, I was hoping to have, uh, a discussion about, uh, infrastructure that, uh, had been proposed last year, and see if that needs to move, it's, if, if you look at the budget, it's speaking for most of the capital improvements fund, and, um, uh, water, the watered sewer line extensions, and the, and the missing piece of the roadway extension, so it, the, uh, if, if we're not going to, uh, use those highway funds, we need to know that, we're, if we're still committed to building that water and sewer line, that, that part has been designed and paid for by the port, the water and sewer line, the, at this point, kind of, to our frustration, the, the roadway is, is not been, uh, constructed, so if there's a purchase order, I'm not sure why McHever and Associates hasn't started working on it, but rather than have them, if the votes aren't here to do those three elements of infrastructure, then it seems to me to not make a lot of sense to spend the fifty thousand currently earmarked with the purchase order, design the roadway, if there's no intent to build it. So, uh, you know, the question has to be raised and discussed, there's no, uh, so that was, was really what we were gonna, I was gonna suggest for an agenda for the economic development, but, uh, with Aaron, uh, as committee chair, and I, and I believe it's fair to say, he's one of the supporters of, of building that infrastructure, proceeding with that project, I'd hate to have the discussion without him, so, that's really about the, the only thing, maybe one informational thing, uh, the, uh, abrupt change in the construction project, I did it, Matt, did, if I may ask, did that get put up on our website?
Yes.
So they were going to close Brant Road between five ninety-eight and Market, going back a few weeks, they were gonna put the stormwater in to, to handle the project, and there was a gas line in the way, so they pulled off, gas company's been out there, got their stuff moved, and now they need to move on the, uh, stormwater, so we'd like to give more than a, you know, one-day notice, that it, it had been a plan for next week, they called late today and said, hey, we've gotta do it tomorrow, that they see a window to get it done, so, uh, that's kind of informational to the broader audience, that, um, you know, I, I guess, I, I don't even know what advice to give to somebody who lives on Fairview or Market out there, probably have to go into town, into Heisey Park, then back out, uh, and, you know, our hopes is that it would be, you know, a, a delay, or delay, not a delay, closure and detour of about one week, so there's some good news for you.
And we can still go up Market to Fairview, right? Like, Mel Town Road?
Yeah, 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 you could come in from sixty-one, that might be people that, that coming in that way, the old way, uh, but you're not gonna, you're gonna get to five ninety-eight, and that left-hand turn is not gonna be available, but, all in the course of progress.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
The only thing additional that I have is, is also a reminder, um, the, the compost facility on Taylor Road, um, the, the agenda calls for the schedule of people to drop off their material when we move back to the twenty-second and twenty-third, uh, due to the, the holiday, um, that we have, so, for those, those who are watching the video that utilize that facility, just a reminder.
The dates again, um, April twenty-second and twenty-third, and they're open seven thirty A M to two thirty P M.
Good. Uh, let me think here, I was, didn't have a report, and I go on rattling on, the Freeze Foundation meets Thursday, right, twenty-first?
April twenty-first.
Yeah, so this Thursday, next Thursday, help me, two, two weeks?
Yeah.
So we'll know about that, we have, uh, I think we're in a position to select a vendor, and tomorrow night got canceled, we had a pretty good discussion about why we're recommending this vendor, uh, for, and that'd be for the surface of it, at, at East Park, so, um, but I, I expect that and other Freeze projects to move pretty fast once, uh, they meet on the twenty-first, so, the, and we're, our intention is to use state purchasing and not bid it, uh, preliminary conversations, is, is there able to do the project in the fall, so we would probably shut down Labor Day and, and be kind of scrooge-y as far as opening it up, we've done that after the formal closure, when it got seventy-five, eighty degrees, we've opened it up, I think it's been a nice, flexible, that's probably not gonna happen this year, so, everybody get their hose out, do the old-fashioned like, what is that, a slip and slide, or something like that, and then you really appreciate the, the, and what I will share with Council, like, are some sort of tentative designs of what it could look like, doesn't have to be all one color, and there's a little bit of customization that I think we can probably, without getting too fancy, we can probably do that without bumping the cost very much, so it's kind of...
Very good. I think that's it, I can get a motion, sure, there?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Allen.
Is it? Seconded by Mr. Hopkins. All right. All day? All right.
Hi.
Oh, hi.